On the third issue relating to whether members shall be allowed to debate on the nomination is not whether having determined the vote condemned under Article 149, one of the Constitution is an election, no debate arises on a matter of election. Indeed, you will recall that in the case of the election of a Speaker of this House and the members of the Eastern Legislative Assembly, no debate arises. This settles that third issue. The fourth issue, honourable members, is the issue on timelines and visit under Article 149, one of the Constitution. You'll observe that Article 149 of the Constitution defines a period within which the President is required to nominate a person to fill the vacance in the office of the President, office of the Deputy President, which is within fourteen days after vacance in the office of the Deputy President arises. The National Assembly is then required to vote on the nomination within sixty days after receiving it. Honourable members, foregoing Article 149, one of the Constitution, defines the maximum period within which the President and the National Assembly are required to act. To this end, the President can nominate a person to fill the vacancy for the first day, from the first day of the vacance, the vacance arises up to the fourteenth day. On its part, the National Assembly is required to vote on any day from the first day it receives a nomination up to the sixtieth day after receipt of the nomination. Consequently, the nomination of Professor Kithure Kendike EGH and the vote the House is required to take today on the nomination is within the constitutional timeline provided for in Article 149, one of the Constitution. This settles that fourth issue. The fifth and final issue that was raised was guidance on the threshold for voting under Article 149 of the Constitution. It is not whether Article 149, one of the Constitution, has not defined or provided for the threshold for voting for the nomination of a person to fill the vacance of the office of the Deputy President. Article 122, one of the Constitution provides that except as otherwise provided in the Constitution, any question proposed for decision in either House of Parliament shall be determined by a majority of the members in that House present and voting. Consequently, the threshold for voting on the nomination of Professor Kithure Kendike EGH is a majority of the members in this House present and voting, as provided for in Article 122, one of the Constitution. That final issue is also settled. Honourable members, in summary, therefore, I wish to guide the House as follows. One, that Article 149 of the Constitution requires the House to take a vote on the nomination of Professor Kithure Kendike EGH to fill the vacance in the office of the Deputy President. Two, and in this regard, the House will be guided by its previous Presidents whenever it's called upon to take a vote on a matter as relates to the election of the Speaker, the Deputy Speaker and members of IALA and Pan-African Parliament. Three, that no debate arises on a matter that the House is required to take a vote. Four, that the nomination of Professor Kithure Kendike EGH and the vote the House is required to take on the nomination is within the constitutional timeline provided for in Article 149, one of the Constitution. Five, that the House Business Committee has resolved that the vote condemned under Article 149, one of the Constitution be taken today during this sitting of the House. Six, that the threshold for voting on the nomination of Professor Kithure Kendike EGH is a majority of the members in the House present and voting, as provided for in Article 122, one of the Constitution. The House is therefore accordingly guided and will now proceed to take the vote. Clerk, can you ring the division bell for five minutes?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, as you have rightly said that we will take a vote, but, Mr. Speaker, this House recognizes three types of voting. There is acclamation, there is direct digital voting, and then there is a vote we take by reading out the names.
Roll call.
Roll call, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, when I sit in this House, we are in concurrence that Professor Kendike is the man, is the Deputy President. Why don't we just so that we go home? Some of us want to take flights. Why don't we just vote by acclamation?
Rogo?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Article, Article 149, Mr., protect me, Mr. Speaker.
Go on, I'm listening.
Article 149 of our Constitution, Section One, as you have rightly pointed, that the National Assembly shall vote on the nomination of the nominated Deputy President. Mr. Speaker, the mood of the House is that there is no objection whatsoever as far as nomination of Professor Kendike is concerned. Yes, we are ready with our hands to vote electronically, but, Mr. Speaker, we seek your ruling and redactions so that we can go by accumulation and we solve the matter once and for all. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
All honourable members, yes, Senior Counselor? Senior Counselor Otendem?
Thank you. Honourable Speaker, honourable members, I know this is a serious moment in history. It is also a constitutional moment. I wholly agree with the Honorable Wanjala and Oburu in terms of the mood of the House. However, Mr. Speaker, there are things we need to do for the record, not just for ourselves. Even as we speak, this whole process is being challenged in court. We need not allow any gap because so far, from the start to now, we have not allowed any gap. Let us not be in a rush to allow a gap. I beseech members, let us vote electronically, it does not take time. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Honourable members, let's not open debate on this. Electronic voting takes less than five minutes. I'm sure you know this. So, since the House is nearly full, let's have the division bell rung for just five minutes, then we draw the bar, you log in, and we call out the vote, and the majority leader and minority leader nominate one person each to act as tellers. Then, with those who don't have cards, I say, you record at the table with the clerks.
You're watching live pictures from the National Assembly where members of Parliament are preparing to vote for the nomination of Professor Kithure Kendike to fill the vacancy in the Deputy President's office. Professor Kithure Kendike is currently serving as the Cabinet Secretary for Interior and National Administration, only has held since October 2022 with a brief hiatus between the 11th of July 2024 and 8th of August 2024, when the President dissolved his Cabinet. As the Cabinet Secretary for Interior and National Administration, Unubokindeke has led and overseen achievement of various milestones and reforms, including the Police Equipment Modernization Programme, significantly enhancing the capabilities of Kenya's security services, finalization of a strategic framework to commence implementation of police reforms recommended by the Honorable Justice David Maraga Task Force, as well as abolishment of the previous vetting processes for issuance of national identity cards, recognition of minority groups and stateless communities ensuring they receive Kenyan citizenship and associated rights, and operationalization of the Public Benefit Organizations Act. These are some of the achievements of Professor Kithure Kendike as the Cabinet Secretary for Interior. Prior to his appointment to the Cabinet, Professor Kendike served as the elected Senator for Taraka Nite County from 2013, in which time he also served as the Deputy Speaker of the Senate, as well as the Majority Party Leader in the Senate. In his role as Senate Majority Leader, he spearheaded the legislative agenda of the Majority Party in the Senate and served as the leader of the Majority Party. As Senate Deputy Speaker, Professor Kendike deputized the Senate Speaker in presiding over sittings and debates in the House of Senate and enforcing rules of procedure and parliamentary processes. Unubokindeke also conducted oversight roles, governance of counties, and participated in lawmaking on matters affecting counties. As an advocate of the High Court of Kenya with legal experience spanning over twenty-four years, Unubokindeke was consulted for international organizations, including the World Trade Organization's WTO, the African Union, the Intergovernmental Authority on Development IGAD, the United Nations, and UN Specialized Agencies such as the United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees, UNHCR, and United Nations Development Program, UNDP, and practice as Defence Council at the International Criminal Court at the Hague. Unubokindeke has also taught law and held various administrative positions at Moi University School of Law and the University of Nairobi School of Law. He began his career as an Assistant Lecturer in Law at Moi University immediately upon graduating with an undergraduate degree in law. He then joined the University of Nairobi as a lecturer after graduating with a PhD in international law, where he quickly rose to the head of Department of Public Law at the young age of thirty-three years, and then to position of Associate Dean at the age of thirty-five. Professor Kendike was later promoted to the post of Associate Professor of Law at Kenyatta University. He has authored thirty-five publications, including books, book chapters, and articles in local and international peer-reviewed journals. Unubokindeke holds a Bachelor of Law degree from Moi University, a postgraduate diploma in law from the Kenya School of Law, a Masters of Law degree, and a doctorate in international law from the University of Pretoria in South Africa. His professional affiliations include membership of the Academic Council on the United Nations System, the International Association for the Study on Forced Migration, the International Commission of Jurists, the East African Law Society, and the Law Society of Kenya, LSK.
Take your seats. Sergeant, you may now draw the bar. Close the bar, sorry. Of course, lock the door for purpose of voting. All honourable members, all honourable members, can I have a fill on how many members don't have their cards? Not many. I request respectfully members who don't have their cards to come to where civil servants sit, where they come to this House, on both sides. And you go to, you can go to either side, it doesn't matter, but get in there. Sergeant, give them way. You go in there. Engia, engia, Oko. Yes. Get, get to this side, honourable members, without cards. You can even spill to the back, no problem, you will be called. Catherine, if you have no card, move in. Yes. Member for Gattundo, member for Gattundo, complete your journey, where are you going? All honourable members, move this side. Evo Barra, you also don't have your card, come this side. My honourable members, the question we are voting on is on the nomination of Professor Kithure Kendike EGH to fill the vacancy in the office of the Deputy President of the Republic of Kenya. That is the question. Now, log in. Take out your cards. Take out your cards. Log in. Yoro, are we right? Tungoje, wakurugezu, wamitambo. Catherine, you have your card?
Yes, yes, I have my card.
Yes. Who are the tellers? They're not tellers, okay. Order, Katana, what is the problem? Tuna ngoje, wakurugezu, wamitambo. Yoro, are we ready? Okay. Are we? It's not work, then join this. Okay, members, members who have logged in, now vote. Then you'll record here, just hold. Don't interfere, all the members, don't interfere with your cards so that the system can record and count as you vote. All? End of voting. A vote now. Order. Yoro, what is the problem? All the members, let's repeat, log out. Your rules require that you vote in silence, log out, log in. Once you've logged in, just hold until you are told, vote now. Don't vote yet. Is it malfunctioning? Kiroi, is it malfunctioning?
Yes.
Clack? Is it working? Yoroke, you have a problem. Vote now. Vote now. Vote now. The IT man, what is the problem? Let's try one more chance, then if it doesn't, we explore different opportunities. Vote now. Member for Kisumo, you have voted, you remain where you are. Pardon? Yes, it's done. All, all the members, order, so you remain in your seats. When voting is going on, you remain in your seats. The three ladies go back. What is the problem? Now, for the members who didn't have their cards, you will pass one by one, and they will tick against your name. You've already voted here. Oh, very good. And yourself? You have voted? You are voting? If you have voted, take your seat. Those whose equipment malfunctioned can come to the desk here and report to the clerk. Okay, okay. The floor of the National Assembly, where members are currently voting on the nomination of Professor Kithure Kendike.
to fill the vacancy in the Deputy President's office. The administration has held since October 2022, albeit also for a small or a brief hiatus between July 11 and August 8, 2024. The Cabinet Secretary for Interior and National Administration has served under different capacities. Among them, the Deputy Speaker of the Senate, the Senator for Tarakanithi County, and is currently serving as the Interior Cabinet Secretary. As an advocate of the High Court of Kenya with legal experience spanning over 24 years, Professor Kindeki has consulted for various international organizations, among them WTO, that is the World Trade Organization, the African Union, the Intergovernmental Authority on Development, the United Nations, and UN Specialized Agencies such as the United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees and United Nations Development Program UNDP, and Practice as Defense Council at the International Criminal Court at The Hague. He has also taught law and held various administrative positions at Moore University School of Law and the University of Nairobi School of Law. He began his career as an Assistant Lecturer in Law at Moore University, immediately upon graduating with an undergraduate degree in law. He then joined the University of Nairobi as a lecturer after graduating with a PhD in international law, where he quickly rose to the head of Department of Public Law at the age of 33 years, and then to position of Associate Dean at the age of 35. Professor Kindeki was later promoted to the post of Associate Professor of Law at the Kenyatta University. He has authored 35 publications, including books, book chapters, and articles in local and international peer-reviewed journals. Honorable Kindeki holds a Bachelor of Laws degree from Moore University, a postgraduate diploma in law from the Kenya School of Law, a Master of Law degree, and a doctorate or PhD in international law from the University of Pretoria in South Africa. His professional affiliations include memberships to the Academic Council on the United Nations System, the International Association for the Study on Forced Migration, the International Commission of Jurists, the East African Law Society, and the Law Society of Kenya. In a couple of...
Honorable members, take your seats. Stop what you are doing, clerk. Honorable members, Hassan. All the honorable members. Honorable members, taking the cue from the submission of Senior Counselor Tendamolo, whatever you do must be a record, must be impeccable, and must speak for itself. I'm advised by the clerk that the electronic voting system is malfunctioning, and that even after you voted, the numbers are adjusting themselves upwards and downwards. Consequently, I direct that that vote electronically is canceled and annulled, and we'll do a roll call vote. Clerk, majority and minority leader give me one teller each. Bukose? And who else? Bukose and Junet? Oh.
Adam Aso.
Okay. Bring to oh, Zamzam? And who else? One more. Oh. Owaino. Martin. Okay, honorable members, once again, the vote is on the nomination of Professor Kithara Kindeki AGH to fill the vacancies of the Office of the Deputy President of the Republic of Kenya. Clerk, you can start. Remain in your seats, remain silent. We can do this very quickly.
Ainabkoy, Cheponga, Kiprona Samuel. Ainamoy, Langat Benjamin Kipkuru. Ainamoy, Langat Benjamin Kipkuru. Aldai, Kitani, Marian Jebet. Alego, Usonga, Atandi Samuel. Alego, Usonga, Atandi Samuel. Awendo, Owaino, John Walter. Bati, Mrembo, Airin Joki. Balambala, Shurie, Abdi Omar. Baringo County, Sergon Florence Jamatia. Baringo Central, Joshua Kandie. Baringo North, Maghlab Joseph. Baringo South, Charles Cameron. Belgood, Nelson Kohech. Obasi, Innocent Obiri. Obasi, Innocent Obiri. Obasi, Innocent Obiri. Bamachoge Borabu, Obadia Norfason, Barongo. Bamachoge Chache, Alpha Miruka Undeki. Bomet County, Cheporeulinit. Bomet Central, Richard Kirel. Bomet East, Richard Yegon. Bonchari, Charles Onchoke. Bonchari, Charles Onchoke. Bondo, Gideon Ochanda. Bondo, Gideon Ochanda. Borabu, Patrick Osiero. Budalangi, Sauti, Bitawanjala. Bumula, Nelson Jack Wamboka. Bumula, Nelson Jack Wamboka. Bungoma County, Catherine Nanjala Wabilianga. Bungoma County, Catherine Nanjala Wabilianga. Bura, Ado Kuno Yakub. Bura, Ado Kuno Yakub. Bureti, Kibet Homingoikirui. Busia County, Catherine Omanyo. Butere, Nicolas Tindimuale. Nicolas Tindimuale. Butula, Joseph Oyula. Butula, Joseph Oyula. Buri, Muruidania Rendikiri Mugambi. Central Imanti, Moses Nguchine. Changamwe, Omar Muini. Chapalungu, Victor Kohech. Chapalungu, Victor Kohech. Cherangani, Patrick Simiu Barasa. Chesume, Paul Beago. Chukai Ganga Gombi, Ntuega Patrick. Dada, Farma Alim. Dagureti North, Beatrice Elachi. Dagureti South, John Carrier. Eldama Ravin, Musa Sirma. Eldas, Adam Kenan. Elgomarquet County, Gepto Ngalechei. Embakasi Central, Major Dong Gadiru Benjamin. Embakasi Central, Major Dong Gadiru Benjamin. Embakasi East, Babu Owaino. Embakasi East, Babu Owaino. Embakasi North, James Gakwea. Embakasi North, James Gakwea. Embakasi South, Julius Mawade. Julius Mawade. Embakasi West, Mark Samuel Mwenje Mureidi. Mark Samuel Mwenje Mureidi. Embo County, Dabu En Pamela Njoki. Emgwen, Lenmengit Joseph Kipto. Emgwen, Lenmengit Joseph Kipto. Emuhaya, Omboko Milamba. Emurodikil, Johana Ngenu. Ennebes, Bukose Doctor. Fafi, Farah Sala Yakub. Fonyula, Wilba Force Owundo Ojumbo. Galole, Said Buya Hiribaye. Galole, Said Buya Hiribaye. Said Foster. Ganze, Kenneth Charo Tungule. Charo, Kenneth Charo Tungule. Garisa County, Udogon Amina. Garisa Township, Major Deco Baro. Garsen, Ali Wariogoyo. Garsen, Ali Wariogoyo. Gataanga, Mureu Wakili. Datundu North, Njoroge Kururia. Datundu North, Njoroge Kururia. Datundu South, Gabriel Kagombi. Datundu South, Gabriel Kagombi. Gem, Alicia Odiambo. Gichugu, Robert Gedenge. Okay, Gichimu. Gil Gil, Mother Wangari. Gidongori, Gado Niwamochomba. Gidongori, Gado Niwamochomba. Hamisi, Charles Gimose. Hamisi, Charles Gimose. Homabe County, Bensuda Joyce Otieno. Homabe Town, George Peter Kaluma. Igembe Central, Daniel Keely Karido. Igembe North, Taytumu Munaiwa Julius. Igembe South, John Paul Muregi. Ijara, Abdi Abri Ali. Ikolomani, Bernard Shinali Masaka. Isiyolo County, Mumina Bonaya. Isiyolo North, Joseph Samal. Isiyolo South, Tubi Bidu Mohammed. Tubi Bidu Mohammed. Jomvu, Badibadi Tualip. Jomvu, Badibadi Tualip. Juja, Koinburi George. Juja, Koinburi George. Kabete, Gidua Wamajukuru. Kabondo Kasipul, Ivo Bara. Kabuchae, Joseph Kalasinga. Kabuchae, Joseph Kalasinga. Kacheliba, Lotetaitas. Kacheliba, Lotetaitas. Kaithi, Joshua Kimilu. Kaithi, Joshua Kimilu. Kadjado County, Leia Sankaire. Kadjado Central, Elijah Memusi. Elijah Memusi. Kadjado East, Kakuta Maymay. Kadjano North, Gogoyo Onnesmas. Gogoyo Onnesmas. Kadjado South, Parashina Samuel Sakimba. Kadjado South, Parashina Samuel Sakimba. Kadjado West, Sunkuia George. Kakamega County, Elsie Mohanda. Kaloleni, Paul Katana Paul Katana Kamukonji, Abdi Yusuf Kandara, Jogona Chege Kandara, Jogona Chege Kandui, John Makali Kangema, Pita Kihoongi Kangema, Pita Kihoongi Kagundo, Fabian Chule Fabian Chule Kapenguria, Samuel Moroto Kapsarech, Oscar Sudi Karachonyo, Andrew Akwome Kasarani, Karauri Ronald Karauri Ronald Kasipul, Charles Ware Kadjiani, Robert Mbuy Keion North, Adams Kipsanai Keion South, Gideon Kemayo Kericho County, Beatrice Kemay Keses, Julius Ruto Kiplating Wisero, Christopher Aceka Wangaya Keambaa, John Jogona Kawanjiko Kawanjiko Keambuu, John Machua Keambuu County, Ann Wamurada Kibra, Peter Orero Kibwesi East, Jessica Ambalu Jessica Ambalu Kibwesi West, Mweni Ekomas Mutose Keeni, Njoroge Wainaina Kigumo, Joseph Muñoro Kiharu, Kiharu, Samson Dindi Nyoro Samson Dindi Nyoro Kikuyu, Kemani Ichungwa Kikuyu, Kemani Ichungwa Kikuyu, Kemani Ichungwa Kilgoris, Sunkuli Julius Lekake Kilgoris, Sunkuli Julius Lekake Kilifi, Kilifi, Mwanyange Gathudbeu Kilifi North, Baya Owenya Kilifi South, Kitty Richard Kenchonga Kilome, Thaddeus Kituan Zambia Kimilili, Mutua Didmaswekesa Barasa Kiminini, Bisau Maurice Kakai Kinango, Rai Samuel Gonzi Kinango, Tokuzakari Kwenya Kipipiri, Wanjiko Moya I repeat, Tokuzakari Kwenya Kipipiri, Wanjiko Moya Kipkelion East, Joseph Kimutachi Rort Kipkelion West, Hillary Kiplangatkoske Kirinyaga, Jane Jerry Minor Kirinyaga Central, Joseph Gashoki Getary Kisouni, Rashid Juma Betzimba Kisii, Donya Doris Awuri Kisumu, Ruth Odiambo Odingabusia Kisumu Central, Joshua Odogorun Kisumu East, Shaquille Ahmed Shabir Ahmed Kisumu West, Rosa Akinibuyu Kitui, Irene Mudoni Casalu Kitui Central, Makali Benson Mulu Kitui East, Nimrod Bedukamby Kitui Rural, David Mualika Boni Kitui South, Rachel Kati Nyamai Kitui West, Edith Vertinyenze Kitui Church North, Nyakundi Japhet Mokae Kitutu Church South, Anthony Kibagendi Kitutu Massaba, Clive Ombane Gisairo Konoin, Brighton Leonard Yegon Kureso North, Mutai Alfred Kibrono Kureso South, Joseph Can I repeat, Kureso East North, Mutai Alfred Kibrono Thank you Kureso South, Joseph Kipkoske Tanui Kuria East, Maysori Maruakitayama Kemero Kuria West, Mathias Nyamabe Robi Kualé, Fatuma Hamisi Masito Kwanza, Ferdinand Kevin Wajony Lafé, Abiraman Mohamed Abdi Lakdera, Abdi Kader Usen Mohamed Lakipia, Jane Wangechi Kagiri Lakipia East, Festas Mangikiyondori Lakipia North, Sarah Paulata Corere Lakipia West, Stephen Washeira Karani Laisamis, Joseph Lekuton Lamu, Monica Mudoni Marufu Lamu East, Ruwaida Mohamed Obu Lamu West, Modamas Stanley Moirori Langata, Felix Odewo Kode Larry, Joseph Brukhangara Liconi, Mishijuma Hamisi Mboko Likuyani, Innocent Mahino Mugabe Likuyani Limuru, John Kragu Chege Loima, Protas Ewasit Akujan Luanda, Dick Mahungu Oyugi Lugari, Yahidi Yeah, he said yes, okay So do we repeat? Dick Mahungu Oyugi, Luanda, okay Nabbi, Nabwera Daraja Lugari Lunga Lunga, Mangale Mungachi Foromondo Lurambi, Taitas Hamala Mukwana Mara, Japhet Yeah, Lurambi, Taitas Hamala Mukwana Okay Japhet, Beriti Kareken Buuki Mara Kamene Joyce, Machacos Machacos, Machacos Town, Caleb Muti Isomule Okay Makadara, George Aladwa Omwera Makweni, Suzanne Dunge Kiamba Makweni, Rose Museo Ummo Malava, Moses Malunwinyendi Malindi, Amina Laura Mnyazi Mandera North, Bashir Sheikh Abdulahi Mandera Sheikh Umulher, Kasim Mandera East, Usenwetan Mohamed Abdurahman Mandera South, Abdul Ibrahim Harrow Mandera West, Adam Haji Yusuf Manyata, John Gitonga Mwaniki Mukunzi Maragwa, Mary Wamaua Waidera Njoroge Marakwet East, David Kangogo Bowen Okay Okay Order, order members Order, member for Kisumu, order Order, order Order, order, Rosabuyu Order Wamaua vote Call Wamaua Okay I, I will move to Marakwet West Timothy Kipchumba Toroytich I will repeat, Timothy Kipchumba Toroytich Order Rosabuyu, you're out of order Order Wamaua, just say that Order Timothy Kipchumba Toroytich, Marakwet West Marsabit, Wako Naomi Jilo Okay, I repeat, Marakwet West Order Lilian Kogo, order Lilian Order, Lilian Kogo, take your seat Take your seat, order Go on Marakwet East, David Kangogo Bowen Thank you Marakwet West, Timothy Kipchumba Toroytich Marsabit, Naomi Jilo Wako Order Lilian Kogo, order Masinga, Joshua Bidimutua Malio Mathais, Odanga Joffrey Makoha Madare, Olwot Anthony Tom Madioya Gishuki Edwin Mugo Madira, Kahugu Eric Muangi Madioya Edwin Mugo Gishuki Okay Madira, Eric Muangi Kahugu Thank you Matuga, Kasim Sawatandaza Matungu, Peter Oscar Nabulindo Matungulu, Stephen Mutinda Mule Mavoko, Patrick Makao Kingola Better North, Joffrey Karyuki Kiringa Better South, Bernard Muryuki Nebat Boni, Njoka Erastas Kivasu Boni, Njoka Erastas Kivasu Okay, okay Meru, Elizabeth Karambu Kailemia Karambu Kailemia, Meru Migori, Mohamed Fatuma Zainab Mogotio, Ruben Kiborek Moiben, Phyllis Cheprema Barto Molo, Francis Kuria Kemani Mombasa, Zamzam Mohamed Chimba Mosob, Abraham Kipsan Kirwa Moyale, Guyo Wako Jallesa Msambweni, Salim Faisal Baden Msambweni, Salim Faisal Baden Mount Elgon, Fred Kapondi Chesabet Muhoroni, James Onyango Oyo Mukurwaini, Kawusha John Philip Geshoji Mumias East, Pita Kalerwa Salasia Mumias West, Johnson Manya Naika Moranga, Betty Jerry Minor Mbita, Mohamed Sud Marchele Mwala, Musao Vincent Musioka Watate, Pita Mbogo Shake Mwea, Mary Mahingi Mwingi Central, Gideon Mutemi Muliungi Mwingi North, Paul Musimi Nzengu Mwingi West, Charles Ngusian Guna Nairobi City, Estha Mudoni Pasaris Nayvasha, Jane Wanjiru Jeri Kihara Nakuru, Lisa Chepore Chelule Nakuru Town East, David Ikaria Nakuru Town West, Samuel Arama Nambale, Mulanya Joffrey Ekesa Nambale, Mulanya Joffrey Ekesa Nandi, Cynthia Chepkoske Mugue Nandi Hills, Bernard Kiborki Tour Narok, Rebecca Nonaisi Tonke Narok East, Lemanken Aramat Narok North, Agnes Mantaine Pareyo Narok South, Olentutu Kitalai Narok West, Gabriel Kosyal Tongoyo Navajolo, Emmanuel Wangu Ndaragua, George Gashagua Ndewa, Martin Peters Owino
I vote yes
Ndia, George Masharia Karyuki Njoro, Charity Kadambi ChepKwenya North Hor, Ade Wario Guyo North Imanti, Rahim Dawud Abdul North Mogrango, Josh Nyamache Nyamoko Nyakach, Owor Joshua Aduma Joshua Aduma Nyakach, Owor Joshua Aduma, Joshua Aduma Owor. Nyakach. Nyali, Mohammed, Mohammed Ali. Nyamira, Jerusha Momany Mongina. Nyandarwa, Faith Wairi Mogitau. Nyando, Okelo Jared Odoyo. Jared Okelo Odoyo. Nyaribari Church. Etayama Votage. Nyaribari Church, Janda Zahin. Nyaribari Masaba, Daniel Ogwoka Manduku. Nyatike, Tomboy Odege. Nyeri, Rahab Mukami Wasira. Nyeri Town, Duncan Minor Madenge. Oljororok, Michael Muangi Mushira. Olkalau, David Joguna Kiarajo. Odaya, Michael Wambogo Wainaina. Pokot South, David Losyakao Kosi. Rabai, Mupe Anthony Kenga. Rangwe, Lilian Achien Gogo. Rariada, Paul. Rangwe, Gogo Lilian Achien. Rariada, Paul Otienamola. Rongai, Paul Kibetchebor. Rongo, Paul Abor. Roy Sambu. Okay. Roy Sambu, Augustine Kamande Muafrika. Luaraka, Francis Kaduan Tom Joseph. Roydo, Kenara Samuel Simon Nanga. Runyendjes, Eric Muchangi Njerukaremba. Sabatia, Sloya Clement Logoba. Saboti, Caleb Amisiluiye. Saku, Dido Ali Raso. Samburo, Pauline Lengris. Samburo East, Jackson Lekumontare Lento Johnny. Samburo North, Dominic Eli Lettipila. Samburu West, Josephine Nysula Lesuda. Seme, James Wamburanyikal. Shinialu, Frederick Lusuli Kana. Siaya, Kristina Bakodwar. Sigor, Peter Lo Chakapong. Sigawet Soyun, Justin Kipsang Kemey. Sirisia, John Waluke Koi. Sautik, Francis Kibiyagon Arab Sigay. South Menti, Doctor Shadrak Muiti Edinge. South Mogirango, Silvana Osoro Niego. Soy, David Kiplagat. Starhe, Muago Amos Minor. Suba North, Milis Grace, Miligres Akoto Diambu. Suba South, Karoli Omundi. Subukia, Samuel Kinudiyaga Shobe. Suna East, Mohammed Junet Sheikh Nu. Suna West, Peter Francis Massara. Okay. Taitha Taveta, Lydia Haikamnene Mizige. Okay. Tanariva, Amina Dika Abdullahi. Tarbaj, Hussein Abdibare. Taveta, John Okano Bouire. Teso North, Edward Kaunya Oku. Yes. Teso South, Mary Emase Otucho. Tesu, Joffrey Wandeto Muangi. Taraka, George Getonga Murugara. Tarakaniti, Susan Gugenduyo. Sika Town, Alice Wamboi Nanga. Tiati, William Kamket Kasait. Tigania East, Lawrence Puruburi. Tigania West, John Kanyuidia Mutunga. Tinderet, Julius Malik Biwot. Tongaren, John Murumba Chikati. Transoia, Lilian Chebet Siyoy. Tarbo, Janet Chepremboy Sitiene. Turkana, Cecilia Asinyen Nyetit. Turkana Central, Joseph Namuar Emate. Turkana East, Nicholas Ngikor, Ngikolong. Turkana North, Paul Ekwom Nabuin. Turkana South, John Ariko Namoit. Turkana West, Daniel Epuyo Nanoko. Wasingishu Gladys Chepcoske Bosu. Uganya, David Omochiel. Uriiri, Mark Obola Nyamita. Vehega, Kevai Ernest Ogesi Kagesi. Vehega, Beatrice Kahai Adagala. Voy, Hamis Chome Abdi. Wajir, Fatuma Abdijeho. Wajir, Wajir East, Adam Dawudi Mohammed. Wajir North, Ibrahim Abdissani. Sani. Wajir South, Mohammed Aden Ado. Wajir West, Yusuf Mohammed Farah. Webuye East, Martin Pepella Wanyoni. Webuye, Webuye West, Daniel Wanyamasitati. Daniel Wanyamasitati. West Mogirango, Stephen Mogaka. West Pokot, Raile Chepremo Kaseyway. Westlands, Timothy Wanyoni Wetangula. Undani, Danson Mwashako Makuwona. Yas, Yata, Robert Nguyi Basil. Ali Abdissirat Khalif. Sabina Wanjiru Chege. Joseph Hamis Sidena. Suleka Hulbale Harun. Dorothi Mudoni Ikiera. Jackson Kipke Moakoske. Jackson Kipke Moakoske. Irene Nyakerario, Nyakerario Mayaka. Umulher Harun Mohammed. Teresia, Wanjiru Muangi. Abu Bakar Ahmed Talib. Mara. Mara, Japhet Miritik Kareken Bukey. Order members, is there any member who has ordered Kiborek, order? Is there any member who has not heard his or her name? Honorable members, is there any member?
Yes.
Yes. Joseph Wainaina Iraya. Three forty, Joseph Hamis Sidena. There is a member at the back, they are the nominated member. He's voted, okay. Honorable members, order honorable members, is there any member who has not been called out on the roll call? No member. Could, could the honorable member for Loyima, honorable protest, ever sit Akuja, come to the front, please? Thank you.
Good afternoon, the members of parliament have been voting for the nomination of Professor Kethri Kindiki to fill the vacancy in the Deputy President's office. This voting by roll call was necessitated by the failure of the electronic system and that roll call has been taken and tallying of the votes is currently underway. So, in a couple of moments, we will get the result of the exercise that has been taking place, but just to familiarize with the standing orders on voting and divisions. Standing Order Seventy Three, Roll Call Voting. When the speaker directs a roll call voting to be taken, the division bell shall be rang for ten minutes. The names of one teller for the eyes and one teller for the nays shall be submitted to the speaker and the speaker shall directly tell us to take seats at a designated place which we saw a couple of minutes ago. At the end of ten minutes, the speaker shall direct the doors to be locked and the bar drawn, no member shall thereafter enter or leave the house until the roll call vote has been taken. When the doors have been locked and the bar drawn and the names of the tellers have been announced, the speaker shall put the question again and direct the clerk to call out the names of members in alphabetical order in the presence of the tellers. When called out, each member shall thereupon rise in this or our place and clear assent or dissent to the question in the following manner. I vote yes, or I vote no, or I abstain, or use appropriate Kenya sign language. That is according to Standing Order Seventy Three of the National Assembly. After the clerk has read the last name in the division list, the tellers shall present the results of the roll call vote to the speaker. We shall thereupon announce the result of the vote to the house. So, we are waiting for that process to conclude. On your screen, you can see there's that activity taking place, the tellers are standing. To the left of the screen, just in front of the speaker is the Member of Parliament for Endebes, Honorable Dr. Robert Bukose and the Member of Parliament for Ndewa constituency there. On your screen, Honorable Awino with those four teller and they are being assisted by the clerks. Standing Order Seventy One of the National Assembly talks about technical failure, confusion or error occurring, which we did see some minutes ago. In the event of a technical failure, confusion or In the event of a technical failure, confusion or error occurring in the course of voting, which in the opinion of the speaker cannot otherwise be corrected, the speaker may direct the house to another round of electronic voting or proceed to a roll call voting. And all that we have seen today during this historic exercise for the National Assembly, where they are considering the nomination of Professor Kithure Kindiki, IGH, to fill the vacancy in the deputy president's office. The professor currently serves as the Cabinet Secretary for Interior and National Administration at Oyas Health since October twenty twenty-two. But there was a brief moment between July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and August eighth, twenty twenty-four, when His Excellency the President dissolved his cabinet. But the former senator for Tarakanithi County was appointed to the Veridoket, but it served and is currently serving the country in that capacity as the Cabinet Secretary for Interior. We will see the decision that is taken by the National Assembly this afternoon.
Other honourable members, order. Members, take your seats. Take your seats. Take your seats. Jen Kagiri, take your seats. Take your seats, members. Karemba, take your seats, Ruku. Take your seats. Take your seats. Tell us, go to the bar. Tell us, approach the despite table now. Who is your team leader, Bukose?
Honorable Speaker, on the forty, abstentions zero, nays zero, ayes two hundred and thirty-six.
You're signed to the... Other honourable members, order. Order. Who is that member? Hillary, take your seat. Honorable members, the vote on the nomination of Professor Kithure Kindiki to fill the vacancies in the office of the Deputy President of the Republic of Kenya is as follows. Abstentions nil, nays nil, ayes two hundred and thirty-six. Present and voting, as we had advised you earlier, the vote is overwhelmingly yes. So, the nomination is here with declared passed by the House. And the speaker will transmit the results to the president. And the speaker will also sign a gazette notice to this effect, that the nominee, Deputy President, has been duly voted by the House and approved. Approval is not applicable here. Has been voted by the House and therefore will transmit to the appointed authority to proceed with the appointment. Is now Deputy President-elect. Members having finished on the issue of the Deputy President-elect, it is now one fifty-four PM and the House will adjourn until this afternoon at two thirty.
You've been watching the proceedings in the National Assembly, where the House has voted for the nominee to fill the position of Deputy President, and that is Professor Kithure Kindiki. That message will be transmitted to the president and the Speaker of the National Assembly will gazete the decision of the National Assembly this afternoon. As things stand, Professor Kithure Kindiki is the Deputy President-elect. This broadcast has been brought to you by the Parliamentary Broadcasting Unit in conjunction with the Kenya Broadcasting Corporation. My name is Edward Kabasa, good afternoon.
Very well, just to echo what my colleague Ed Kabasa has just mentioned. It is safe to say that Professor Kithure Kindiki, the Interior Cabinet Secretary, is now the Deputy President-elect after two hundred and thirty-six members of parliament voted to give the green light. My name is Bento Injue, welcome to the program. And before we do start our live coverage, allow me to just introduce the guest that will be...
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
I think the process is done and dusted. Kithure Kindiki will be sworn in today before six.
Okay, but what you...
Okay, but what you are arguing about was... Is that an echo? You have an echo, I don't know.
Can you hear it now?
Hello, hello.
Hello, hello.
Now it's gone.
Okay, now it's gone. Oh, yeah, I can hear you.
And what is wrong with the process?
Um...
Several, several things.
Several, several things, there's an echo inside.
Is there an echo?
Do you have two devices open?
No, just one.
I think you have one.
I think you have one.
I can log out and come in.
Okay.
Can you hear me better?
Okay.
I can hear you, but when I speak...
I can hear you, but when I speak, I can hear echo.
I don't know if you have me on the speaker.
I don't know if you have me on the speaker.
I hear you very clearly.
Let me just go ahead then.
Let me just go ahead then, because...
Okay, so...
Okay, so...
What is the reason why this is...
The reason why...
Okay, what I was saying is this, can you hear me? Mr. Simba, can you hear me? I know everyone. Hello, hello, can anyone hear me? Hello? People in the chats, can you hear me? Yeah, I don't know what's going on. Okay, Mr. Simba, can you hear me? Seems like I lost him. Okay, hopefully he'll be back. Let's see if I can... Okay, Mr. Labani.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you. I can hear you loud and clearly, that's better, okay. So, the reason why I say this is unconstitutional, and I said it yesterday. Number one, the Senate and the Senate and the the National Assembly, they violated, especially the Senate yesterday, they violated Rigadi's right to be present during the hearing, so he can cross-examine. And not only that, because that violates, that's Article one forty-five. You can go read it, it says that the Deputy President should be afforded the right to present himself, be there physically and be cross-examined and be represented. Okay, and that's a violation already. That's why I said it was probably a trick by the Deputy President to use that, being sick, whatever, because he knew they were so eager to take him out. But by law, they were supposed to to afford him a chance to recoup so that he can come there physically and and present himself. Number two, the investigations were supposed to be carried out by the Senate, which should have proven to meet the constitutional threshold of what is gross violation or gross gross, what do you call it, misconduct under Article one fifty. Go read it, because that basically spells out the conditions in which the Deputy President can be impeached. But if you read all the eleven cases, the reasons why we were given as to why he was impeached, none of it meets that. Now, there are people like Otindia Molo and the others, and also Motuse, who were trying to fool the public and saying that oh, they don't need the evidence to prove that, you know, Mr. Deputy Gachagua violated the constitution. Yes, you do, because the process of impeachment is a quasi judicial process. What do I mean by that? You have to prove to the Senate and to the public that Mr. Gachagua actually committed gross misconduct or gross violations. How do you do that? By presenting evidence that there was a crime committed that, you know, that, you know, basically proves that that's gross misconduct or there was an issues about him violating Chapter six of the Constitution, which they all failed to do so. They just, these were basically allegations. And if you, if, just think about it, Mr. Labani, if you're the Deputy President, if I stand here and say that I suspect you of stealing money or money laundering just because you own twenty-two companies, do you think it's fair for people to vote to, to, to take you out of the office based on my suspicion, which I haven't proven yet? I didn't prove it. I'm just suspecting you. And I've been asked to provide proof, but I can't prove it, I'm just... That's just my thought, I'm suspecting you. Do you think that's fair? So, you see how this whole thing was a kangaroo quote?
My brother.
Yeah, go ahead.
My brother, kindly, unirusu ni onge kwa xwahili, I think I can explain you better.
Okay.
Um, na takatu elewa, from the word go. How these people came together? Up on the otunansiya, bottom line, how did these people came together? These people came together through the presidency of Uhuru Kenyatta, whom they accused of mismanaging the country. There was no other basis background. Because Rigadi Gachagua was a personal assistant wa Uhuru Kenyatta. So, he landed Uhuru Kenyatta in and out. Therefore, he was nominated to be the deputy running mate who to be the Deputy President to William Ruto. William Ruto was Uhuru's deputy. All these people were in the government. Okay, they accused the previous regime of mishandling the economy of the country. They have come in now. They are the president and the deputy. Is our economy doing better? No, it is not. What is they accused of doing? Number one, dividing our country into regions. That is the basis of my argument. Go to the clip played when he was in Nandi. And this is what he said. That is what brought down Rwanda. That one enough, even to England, even I don't want to care. Because in two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven post-election violence, I was in one of the hotspots. So, I know what that means. What does it that, that contributes to the economy of the country? What does it, that, that contributes to the economy of the country? Uye mutu mwenya naongea iwo ni secondly command, the deputy president of the Republic of Kenya. And you are here to tell us about the process. What if they bring the whole country down? What will the process help? My friends, let's be honest. Promoting tribalism and the violence will bring this country down, period. This guy has to pack and go. Uye mutu anaishi kwa nyumba ya serikali, yani nalipana taxpayers' money, which he has renovated with hundred million. Na nayiwacha naenda kulala Karen, anafoi the process, yani unasema eti ajaku akorde. Yani atoka for a large break, I walk all the way to Karen, hakupelewa Karen in a ambulance, and this conniving, the procedure, sisi metumika follow. Kibaki used this same process, aliweka Uhuru wa pretending, waiting to take power. And this is what you are trying to tell us, we should sit and wait. Wacha uyo mutarako akalia iyo kitu. We don't mind or care about the processes. That is why people are overwhelmed by the, nani amepinga? You know, we have a history. We have a history where we are coming from. The minority, hawa tambuli kani, we have two tribes for over sixty years, being at the helm of presidents and the deputy presidency, while using other tribes. Na ikifika kwa uongozi, wanambiwa, nini shiya sen unikidogo, amukupiga, yani people align them with the politics, in the name, ya kupata uongozi. Tax, kila mutu analipa tax equally, and even the poor people pay much tax than those political classes, ambao uako, uako uanishi nihebe. That's where they get their salaries from. Lakini ikifika hapa, kwa sababu wa wakupiga, kulingana maendeleo yenyawa, awa party, muna wambia kwa mbashiya saa unikidogo. Surely, what are you telling us? We don't care about the process, and in fact, mimi nataka likuambie iwi. Anyone, let him align them for twenty-twenty-seven to stand against William Ruto. Wale watu wa baba, ambaye saisi yamefanyo kama kinyagua na tusiwa hata namtoto, mwenye was not born in nineteen ninety, to see what this old man has put, or have done to this country. Let align them for twenty-twenty-seven. Ruto anamalisa miyakayake tumi, he hands the power to the next generation. Yenyi itakuja, wacha naiviti ngine.
Okay. Um, mimi nasema iwi, ata kama unasema, ati Gachagwa ali sema mambao ambaye hi-fi, na ni mambaya, unaeza kuiangalia kama niukabila. Uh, tukona sheria, ambayo natuwelezea, uh, kama matamshiaki, uh, ni impeachable, is it impeachable offence? Ata kama likuonasema sidui tumeduwa wato tuwa maneni, is that impeachable offence? Diomano kisema ati you don't care about the process, kama you don't care about the process then-
For you, it's okay? For you, it's okay? Pa iyo matamshiaki?
No, it's not okay, but you have to prove it in the court of law, ati yo matamshiaki likuani, niukabila. Cause sababu maybe he meant something else. Diomano watu nasema, diomano tukona courts, na tukona sheria, ambaye natuwelezea, what really uh, uh, meets the threshold of uh, removing a deputy president? So diomano nafa kuenda, diomano nasema, ata kama yo process tukona fatiliwa, likuona fao alate evidence. Nikama wewe, mimi kisema Simba wewe, nilikuskiyo kisema mamboye ngine, siwaapi ukukuasoko, unafa okuzwe kazi yako. Sin, sin utasema nipelike kotini, ndiyo, nijadilive tuangalia kama i maneno niko, nikoneniyo. It's fair or not?
In fact, revolutionary, let me tell, angalia the voting that happened. Iyo klippeke yake mahali alitumia matamshi, ambayo inalete uchochese na ukabila na kugawa inji, got the highest vote. That one, the only one was enough. They proved it. And it was never repeated.
Yeah, diunasema, is it impeachable offence? That's the question. Is it an impeachable offence? William Ruto maranyangi, ati matamshi kama? Huh?
Yes, it is. Number one, wacha likuambie iwi. Number one, ayu matamshi, unadua hapa ndio uwa tunanda tuna kotea njia. For one, i issue yenyawa tuwanalete hapa iti Ruto, hapa yeye aliongea. The issue was not about two people, it was about one. And whoever who has that evidence, afforded the same procedure, which is very simple. Ndio sababu, Kenyans are confused, na i issue ya kuambie weti kuva dereva kuva makanga. We don't have that process in our constitution, don't mislead people.
Okay, listen then, listen carefully. Diomano nasema, his right was violated by Article 145, cause sababu, Senate likuina fao kompatia, wa kati akuja katika Senatei, na adyeleze, alikuwa namanisha nini, lakini hawakupati-
He skipped the, he skipped the sitting.
Okay, listen to me, listen, but it's saying, listen, there's no law that says that Senate has to uh, do this within one day or two days. Senate can, in fact, the, the Nenio have ten days, wakona sikukumi, to fanya investigation about his or my accusations as a deputy. Lakini Senate hawakupati-
My brother, my brother Kenya, uh, uh, I want to tell you, you- Can I tell you, issue, you know, we are dealing with the presidency, presidency. Presidency are in a time limit, because this is the deputy president of the Republic of Kenya. What if the president gets, God forbid, something happens now?
No, 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 I, I think you don't understand. Sorry. Happened to me, no, 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 you, 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 you think you didn't understand what I was saying. Nasema, Senate had ten days to investigate. Kupatiya nafasi, kukujana reportiye, kama Gachagwa, it trial ya Gachagwa, this quasi judicial process. Senate had ten days. Ukupatia na ni, Rigadi Gachagwa, akuja hapo kwa niniyo kwa Senate, aongee, aditeté. Lakini hawakupatia hiyo nafasi, hawa liskiya-
My brother, Kenya, Kenya revolutionary, Gachagwa was in, in, in the chamber, he skipped the sitting.
Yes, I know that he skipped the sitting, but nasema-
So with, with the talking, complaining about that he was not accorded.
Yeah, he was not, because Senate had ten, diunasema, Senate wa likuona sikukumi. They had give, they, within these ten days, Senate could have, Nenio could have waited to see, ingepite iso sikukumi, umiela, na na Gachagwa hadjatokeza kwa Senate. Then they could have gone on with the, with the Nenio process of voting him out, like anyhow hawakupati-
In fact, my friend Kenya, revolutionary, what you are trying to apply here is a jungle rule. The process, ilikuana, the procedure timeline. The voting was to end, examination was next, when he skipped, which time do you wanted him to be, when he skipped himself?
Listen, the constitution says, the Senate in a period, ten days, ya kukujana report of investigation, ambawa me find kwa i case yote, inachanganiye yo maneno ya kompatia nafasi deputy president. Kama lisema yeni mgonju, akosha hospitali, oh, niniyo kwa, kwa niniyo, ako uko hospitalini. Senate badwa likuanga na, a total of ten days. So within these ten days, ata kama Gachagwa alitoroka, akadi, akanda kujifanya ni mgonjuwa, iso ten days ingepita, then-
When it, it happened?
Huh?
When it was fourteen to happen, before what time?
They have, they have a window of ten days. Within these ten days, they can vote anytime, but this timeframe, wanampa, ime, wamepatiwa by the law. So ata kama Gachagwa kisema ni mgonju, as long as he shows up within these ten days, they, they, they will be still within the law. Like any since, Gachagwa was sick, but they didn't give him that time to recoup within these ten days, that makes it a violation of his constitution as well, constitutional, same article forty-five.
What proof was, wrote to Parliament or to the Senate to show he was sick?
What proof? Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Lawyers, his, his representative lawyers, wa likujana kambie, okambiya Senate, ati, he's sick, that's good enough. The doctor was there, gave him a new press conference.
Of records. So, by kuambia, what proof do you have?
Diomano nasema, askia, the lawyers, lawyer wakoni, you are representatives. It is like you being there, but you're not there, saying, this man is sick, is over there at kwa, kwa hospitalini.
Without any proof, ata hapa, unafanya kasi ukiwa mgonjuwa, when you don't go, they tell you to write a paper. Ya kuonecha kwa mbawa lienda hospitali, mutu unaeza kujia useme ni- And that is over. This is a constitutional process, which goes with record and evidence, yenyi unauliza hiyo evidence, yenyi aukuteana. Now, at the side, when it is done without evidence, it's fine and okay.
Ngodje kidogo, ata kama hana evidence immediately, he had ten days to produce that evidence. Askia, he had ten days to produce that evidence, alikuwa mgonjuwa, na he had ten days to show up in that Senate, that is what the law says. So, where we, kwa serikia, kwa soroboli, lisema sidui nini, 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 does not mean anything if it's not by the law. You have to prove it in the court of law, that ali fanya iwi, ali vunja sheria. If you can't prove it in the, in the law, then, hiyo tu likuwa, itakuwa tu kucomplain. That's the difference between what you're saying and what I'm saying. Endelea.
And I think I'm not contradicting myself, because I see the process is over. The, 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 the deputy president has been nominated, is now deputy president-elect by law, and his name will be forwarded to the president. Finally, he will be sworn in, and that story of Gachagwa will be finished.
Okay, but the, the news is this, hiyo Gachagwa still has to go to judiciary, the courts, which shall examine the evidence that was being brought against him, and they will examine the process in which he was removed uh, from office through this legislative body, wa ifo tiya sheria, was his rights violated? Wakipata kama wakiya, wakiya gina mimia ti-
Court and all failed flat.
Sawa, we shall wait and see, like any nasema, if the courts find that his rights were violated, they will, they will nullify everything that the Senate and the National Assembly did, and Gachagwa will still be the vice president.
Remember, the process was political, it was never constitutional. The judiciary has no business in politics. They cannot align politicians how they have to behave.
Well, let me correct you, uh, it was political and it is also legal, because hiyo process ya kutua Gachagwa, they relied on the constitution. Diomano naskia, ata oliski, sidui kama oliskiyo koti lisema before, vile, wa likuana jaribu Gustav, when they were trying to, when Gachagwa was trying to stop the, the Nenio, the process from going on, koti kamoambia, ati tutachukua i case, after, hiyo mambaye, hiyo mambaye mamaliso wa Senate, na National Assembly, then we shall take it, we shall take that case if it comes to us.
Did you give that, that, that ruling?
They gave that ruling to respect, yes, yes, listen. No, listen, they respected the idea of separation of power. The legislative body has demanded by the constitution to impeach-
Exactly.
To, to, askia, askia, to impeach the, Rigadi Gachagwa, the vice president. Now, if the process, which is, has been spelt out in the constitution, was not followed as per the law, then the courts can nullify the whole process that happened at the Senate and the National Assembly, and Gachagwa can still go back and become the deputy president, and that's what I'm asking.
No, it cannot happen like that, my friend. It cannot.
It's going to the court, hiyo diokoti lisema, koti will, will take that case. And based on what happened, they violated, it was clear violation of Gachagwa's Nenio. Anybody can tell, ata intaka some, Abdina Siri, vile, likuana ndika tweet sake, um, wa, wa nyoyake. Every lawyer was saying that. Hmm?
Abdina says, I'm very controversial lawyer, who can, I cannot believe.
He, he, he wasn't the only one who say that. It, it's so obvious. You don't have to be a lawyer, actually, ukiya, kisomu to what the constitution says. This Senator's violated Rigadi Gachagwa's right. So whether umechukia Gachagwa, cause sababu nasema niukabila, uh, that's immaterial in this case. We are just dealing with facts and what the law says. And if you look at the law, what the constitution says, um, diomano na ona, hawa tonasherekeha apa, they'll be disappointed, koti ki, ikikata yokiri, ikikata yokisi, unless Ruto alipe koti. They'll be very disappointed.
Don't bring this thing, unless Ruto alipe. There's nothing likely, but this thing is done and dusted.
Okay. Sawa ni moniako, me sedan is dusted, I don't think it's over, done. You'll be surprised. I don't know when they take the quarters.
And in fact, mimi ni koapa, right from Motembe, all the way, ah, the following this thing, so long as the process was followed, there's nothing like the constitution. Because the process is purely political.
Diomano nasema, Laban, the process wasn't followed as per the constitution. The constitution, diuna tuambia vile process if chukuli, if anywe. Sasa Senate, na National Assembly, wakivunja sheria ya hiyo process vile na fatiliwa. Then the whole thing is a sham, so they have to nullify everything, and Gachagwa will still be the deputy president, ndiyo diunasema. So you can't say-
But I'm wondering, I'm wondering, I'm, I'm wondering, the argument, unasema, eti Gachagwa was not accorded, he was present for two days running, until afikia his path, where it was very crucial for a cross-examination. Runs away, and have more, what is that, sure?
Yes, naskia, this, diomano na kwambia, Senate wa likuana, ten days. Listen to me, ten days, ya kukujana reporti, na kufanya ya cross-examination. So they should have waited for those ten days. Ten days kipita na Gachagwa ha, hajawonekana, then they can go ahead and vote on the matter. Cause that's what the law says, lakini hawakupati-
Is that, is something that was compulsory?
Ati dini, sorry, Rudia.
What's compulsory?
Yes, it is.
What was compulsory is for him to represent for cross-examination, and he skipped.
Yeah, yes, but the whole process, ya hiyo for Senate, part of the cross-examination and collecting of the evidence, and hiyo mambote, they had ten days to do it, ten-day window, you need dusted, you need law, you see, I can argue.
Gachagwa realized that he lay down, he was not to escape. So that is what, that was his only route he was left with.
Sidya kata, lakini nasema iwi, dioniskie, sidya kata, na kubali ati Gachagwa, maybe alikuana jificha unisidui nini, lakini nasema, sheria inasema, alikuwa na sikukumi, Senate imepewa sikukumi, wangode kama shigaga Gachagwa atakuja, ama akuja jaditokeza, ama haditokeza, aspo jitokeza kwa izi sikukumi, then the Senate can go ahead and vote him out. Lakini hawakupati, which, which makes it, which makes it uh, wameviolate rights za Gachagwa, cause sababu akungodha hapa, pate, pate unenio, adio, kuja kuko, niniyo hapa kwa Senate. So that makes it a violation of the Article 145. Diomano i kitu kiena kotini, there's most likely, hiyo koti sponenuliwa, Gachagwa atarudi kweneniwa, atakuwa vice of deputy president, atarudi.
We are waiting, just waiting, but remember, for one thing, Gachagwa had been threatening the president, goza mulima. Hiyo mulima saisi siwe eti kukosa, ali kanyaga katikati, now we have Mount, Mount Kenya east and west. And by nominating Kendiki, I think mulima watu ali kanyaga, ata siwe kukosa.
Yeah, hiyo, hiyo ni sasa, hiyo ni upande wa siasa, mimi nasema tu, tukiangalia upande wa sheria. Eh, na diyo kuna upande wa siasa, na kuna upande wa sheria. Siasa muzazile kuko inji unaeza kuzama mambaya ku, lakini, ukitaka kushika mto ku share, ku niniyo, ku, 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 prosecute mto, mpa ka kuja na evidence, no, usemehe, uja mahali fanya A, B, C, D. Diomina kwambie apa, na uniskie vizuri, ndika chini, chikuwa kalamo. Gachagwa will still be the deputy president, mpa ka twenty-two seven.
No, in fact, you are joking, you are joking now.
I'm joking, I'm not joking.
You are joking, because, for now, yes.
Case ya Gachagua inanzalini, hiyo case ya ke ya Nino, hiyo amepelika kwa umedyua.
Uh, kulikona panel ya nya, likuwa constituted ya three judges, I think that's where the whole thing will be directed, to, asapabu, the cases were many, and they were consolidated, uh, but exactly that, I will keep an eye and my ear, very keenly, from there, I will come here and tell you what happened.
Okay, tutakuwa apa, and I'll invite you, so we can have that discussion, ata min ta, tutakuwa, I'll put my ear and my eyes.
By the way, Dikisaiyi will be the best deputy president, one is a very humble guy, when I believe in the shareholding, is not that tribal, he comes from a, a, a minority, which is the Taraka, what when ambawa amekua misuse, with that mount, 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 mountaineering issue, and the shareholding issue, the Taraka since independence, had isolated the small tribe in the eastern part of Mount Kenya, ambawa amekua used because of their numbers. Remember, in two thousand, two thousand and, two, two thousand and seven and eight, their votes, senior silueta, eh, ekibaki, in power, silikuwa sinatoka Tarakaniti, they are too populous, in fact, you cannot compare Mount, eh, Taraka Nganyeri, kua kupiga kura, those people do vote, and they have come to realize, amekua misuse it for long, and they will take it up from here.
Ayah, sawa sawa, ayah basi, na shukuru, tutanga, tuzidi kuangalia basi, hiyo case vilita ndelea.
Me shukuru sana kua kuenge, ata kama unanikanga kando kwa comment section, lakini niko sawa. Nikia ndisanga, bitosanga, haku unakwaka hapo kando, lakini, that is the truth. In fact, in fact, just a minute, what anikwambia Kenya, uh, in fact, and I want to tell you, Ruto, mimi sijawaimpenda, sijawaimu shugulika na mambu yake, even one day, but this guy is transforming a, a tribe, a political class in Kenya, is doing away with this family, senior uliko nasikia, and he will clear them all. This, this thing ya nya munatuambia, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't know the outcome, but I'm telling you, this thing of Gachagua, done and dusted, you cannot divorce your wife, and now, your neighbor comes, akuambia sasa, unadua, ata mimi neli divorce, lakini weka na huiwa, that cannot happen, Ruto has a country to run.
Okay, ayah, sawa basi, yo fanya ivi, eh, subscribe, na kujiapa ilisi kuata, sikuila atarudi.
I'm a subscriber, that's why you see me every day, um, anytime unakuja, mimi niko na wewe.
Mimi nakonanga, pona fikira unakuja tuna uchokosi.
I'm very serious guy in the politics, eh, ata akinamusalendo, kutoka kua kina Bernard, kutoka mtembe, mimi niko tu hapo, I know what I'm doing.
Okay, sawa sawa, na shukuru basi Laban, thank you so much for joining.
Thank you so much.
All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for watching, that was the session, thanks to Laban, Pretty Pal, um, uh, Nani Naitwaji, how many people, uh, everyone that was watching, um, Rose M, who else was here? Uh, Maryam, she, for your comments, please don't forget to like, share, subscribe to the channel, I will be back later for another session, as things are unveiled, like Laban told me, uh, we might be having Kindeki being sworn in later today, or the courts might stop the whole process as they, uh, start, uh, digging in and reviewing what really transpired, they might nullify the whole process that happened at the legislative body, let's wait and see, so join in, make sure you subscribe, share, like, comment, and I will see you guys in a few hours, thank you, and goodbye for now, peace and blessings.